Good evening and welcome to this October 21st, 2024 meeting of the Akron Public School Board. Thanks for joining us this evening. If you are able to stand, please do so for the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice President Jackson, would you please lead us?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is the Oath of Office. We will be having Judge Jennifer Tow read the Oath of Office for Reverend Gregory Harrison. If you could join us at the podium.
I solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States.
I solemnly swear I will support the Constitution.
Constitution of the state of Ohio.
Constitution of the state of Ohio.
That you will perform faithfully the duties.
Faithfully the duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of the Akron City School District.
Of the Akron City School District.
Summit County.
Summit County.
Ohio.
Ohio.
To the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws.
And in accordance with the laws.
Now in effect and here and after.
Now in effect and here and after.
Acted.
To be enacted.
During your continuance.
Continuance.
In said office.
In said office.
Until your successor is elected and qualified.
Until my successor is elected and qualified. I do.
Congratulations as the newest member. So happy to be here. So nice to be here. I think we need, does anyone have a pen, we can borrow? Oh, okay. Here we go.
Yep.
Then if you'll just, oh, you've got one too. Perfect. President Autry, do you need me to also sign or just? Just the? Can we sign also? Okay.
Judge Tow, we'd like a picture, please. Thank you very much and welcome. Roll call, please. Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Reverend Harrison.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Molinar.
Present.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next, we will have recognitions, our superintendent's Book of the Month Club winners. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry, President Jackson, Vice President and Board members. To all that are assembled here today, I am extremely thrilled to announce that ACME is partnering with APS once again this year for the Superintendent's Book Club. Our goal is to encourage all our scholars to read every 20 minutes, read 20 minutes every day, exposing them to an astonishing 1.8 million words each year. And I'm also happy to say that ACME has gone over and beyond what they did last year to support us. So I'm very, very, very excited about that. I'd like to take a moment to recognize our top three readers for September in the elementary category. Congratulations to second grader Winnie Byers from Sam Salem. And we'll ask you to come forward in just a moment, who read an impressive 24 books. For middle school, a round of applause for sixth grader Jess Reynolds from Ennis, who read nine books. And at the high school level, we have a tie. Congratulations to ninth grader Prince Norris and 10th grader Cleveland Robinson. No relations. Bo from North High School for reading seven books. Let's give it up for our high schoolers. In total, our K to five scholars read over 239 books in September. Middle school scholars read 82 books and high school scholars read 151 books. Windermere led in the elementary category with 61 books read. Ennis topped middle school with 39 books and North excelled at the high school level with 123 books. Congratulations to these schools. It is extremely impressive that so many books were read this month, especially considering we had only started the book club in mid-September. Scholars, I'm incredibly proud of you. Now, I would like for our parents and our principals and our scholars to come so that we can award certificates. And ACME has given a little extra, so thank you.
Look how cute. Got her little dress on. Shiny boots.
Yes.
She looks like her mother.
Cleveland. Windermere. Ennis. And North High.
Thank you all so much. Let's take a picture. We can kind of come together.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations again to the families and students. Keep up the good work. The next item on the agenda are Board Member Reflections, and I do want to allow Reverend Harrison an opportunity more than the allotted three minutes, if you need, just to share any reflections you might have.
Thank you for not holding me to my three minutes, eh, ma'am? There's some people I want to thank and there's some people who are here. Well, they just left, my parents. But a- as a newly elected board member, I want to say that I am Akron. I am APS Schools. There's someone who is very special here and we got reacquainted two and a half years ago. My second grade teacher is here, Ms. Susan Smith. Can you stand up? The reason I don't smoke cigarettes is second grade, I remember Ms. Smith telling us about what lungs look like if you smoke. How you're born with pink lungs and if you smoke, those lungs become hard and dark. I remember that and I carried that with me throughout my life, so I don't smoke. But I want to say that Akron Public Schools have been good to me. Academics did not come early for me. Academics did not come through my high school years, junior high. As a matter of fact, it just started to snap my second year of seventh grade. Things started to get moving. I was a disciplinary transfer to Roswell Kent. And then the socialization, the love that my teachers have shown me, it wasn't about academics. That's what makes I Promise School so important to the community, the wraparound services, the football coaches, the love, the, if it's nothing but a pair of socks that get to, that the kids get, those are the things that Akron Public Schools represent. We can't look at test scores and I would ask everyone to seriously consider when you consider supporting the schools. There are things that we'll never be able to measure, metrics we can never measure from a public school system. The love, the caring, the teachers, the staff, the janitorial staff, the lunch ladies who feed kids who don't have money. Those are the things that we should consider when we consider supporting the schools or not. I am a product of a lunch lady who cared enough about me to make sure I ate. I am a product of a teacher who got me a job because she knew I didn't have money. I am the product of a football coach who taught me discipline. I am a product of this school system and I would ask everyone to support this school system. And I assure you with everything in me that we will do everything we can as a board to be accountable to your vote. That's not any vote, but we're asking you to support the school system. Ms. Smith, thank you to my parents. Thank you to Carla. Thank you to everyone. Thank you. And my brothers in the back, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other community or school reflections at this time? Dr. Molinar.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a couple of quick ones combining childhood, the whole childhood with academics and it's with our trunker treats. I don't have all the information about all of the trunker treats, but I have a few to highlight here. One, Resnick is combining their trunker treat with a Title I Book Night, and so that way we can have the academics there. I read an article, Firestone Thespians are hosting trick or treat during the same time as Akron's Trick or Treat in the sidewalk in front of the school. It's part of their service project and so it's academic for them. And then also in my last community and school reflection, I talked about Helen Arnold and Family Resource Centers. And as a reminder that the Family Resource Centers for, for people who only get to visit our schools maybe when they are voting, a trunk or treat might be an opportunity to come to a building at another time and visit our buildings and see our students. And a reminder that the Family Resource Centers are part of our community learning centers in many of our buildings and they are available to any community member. It doesn't have to be a student or the parent of a student to be able to utilize the resources in our Family Resource Centers. And so Helen Arnold's trunk or treat is October 24th. They'll have lots of other resources and info tables, Medicaid, meet and greet, and lots of information that could be helpful to any community member, not just community members with children. So visit our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Molinar. Are there any other community or school reflections? None? Vice President Jackson.
I'm pausing because of what I, I voted early. I went to early voting and I was just so happy to see so many community members out from the Akron area and just sharing with me their support for our levy that's on the ballot. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who greeted me and saw me and had a kind word to say to me and a special shout out, I can refer already to Ms. Sykes, who made sure that my daughter, who's away abroad in Paris, France, was able to get a ballot in. So as a young voter, she is not missing any of her opportunities to vote. So I'm very grateful for Village and, you know, when people stand in the gap and give you information, because information is a blessing, but it's also power and we know it's power in our vote. So I definitely wanted to highlight that and also to say it is good to share information with others around you because sometimes you may assume people know, you may assume that people are registered. But if you have knowledge or you're seeing young people, it would take nothing to just ask them, hey, have you voted? Or when it's time for registration, how many people have you registered this year? That's something also to consider. So I want to say thank you, Akron, or everyone who I saw who gave good energy and vibes is greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other reflections? So I'll just share briefly, since we last met, I had the opportunity to visit several PTA meetings. And as you know, PTA is near and dear to my heart. Akron Early College PTA, Buceto PTA, Miller South PTA, Case PTA, and STEM Middle School PTA. It was a pleasure to be able to just be amongst these people who are cheerleaders for our district, who put that cherry on top for all the things in our buildings. And so from elementary to middle up to high school, it's just great to see folks who believe in us and who care enough to fill in those gaps for our buildings to make things special. And I also just wanted to share, anyone who would like to join PTAs, you join through an app called Give Back. So if you type in the name of the school and Give Backs, you can join any PTA. And so I joined all of those PTAs, even though I can't volunteer, you know, that $7 to $10 is worth supporting the mission of the PTA. And then I also wanted to share because I know we are wanting schools to have PTAs. I know we had a discussion with superintendent. You know, if you have an existing PTO, that's okay too, because the important thing is just having that parent engagement. So I did want to share that on the mic as Vice President Jackson says that it is indeed okay to have a PTO, although I'm partial to PTA just because of its longstanding history. Also, I wanted to share, I had the opportunity to finally get to a football game as football season is ending. But it was just so beautiful to be out amongst our beautiful students and the bands sounded amazing and just the whole overall climate was, was great. I went to see East versus Firestone and then Buceto versus Garfield. But the bands sounded amazing and so just watching the young people enjoy themselves and it just makes you see how important sports are, how it brings a community together to rally around something that matters and seeing their students put in such good, good work. I also had the opportunity to go to Akron Roundtable event and although I didn't get to sit with any of the students, I got to take some pictures and talk with them in between before the speaker started from North and Garfield and Akron Early College, students who are interested in going to the healthcare field. And so I'm encouraging them because there's a nursing shortage and I need some help over at Akron Children's. And so that concludes my community reflections at this time. Next on the agenda are requests to address the board, and we do have several this evening. And so I will call up the first person as I read our preamble. I know this first person already knows it. She's heard it plenty of times. Citizen Carla Chapman, as you make your way up to the mic, I will read this preamble. Participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific student or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Participants must speak on matters related to the business of the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will assign through the superintendent the appropriate person for follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent and Community Members. I am here as a representative of the Citizen Committee for the Akron Public Schools, and I wanted to share a few updates with you on our Issue 27 campaign. So this is the homestretch, the last 15 days before November 5th, thank God. We are pressing ahead with our plans and reaching as many voters as possible. We have continued to speak with Akron voters at city ward meetings, community and faith-based events. People have been very positive and receptive when provided with the facts. And the construction of a new North High School has resonated with many voters. Fundraising efforts continue with responses from local residents, business owners, staff and others. Adam Marcy, along with community volunteers and cluster team members, have placed yard signs all over the city. Volunteers have provided coverage at the Board of Elections daily since early voting began on October 8th. This last chance to speak with voters immediately before they cast their vote has been extremely valuable. And again, we've received mostly positive responses from Akron voters. Our second mailer with all of the current endorsements hit mailboxes this past Saturday to registered and newly registered voters and those who have not yet cast their vote. And if you haven't received it, I'm happy to show you an example. A third mailer is in production and will hit boxes sometimes this week. On last Saturday, October 19th, and during the prior weeks, volunteers and community members of organizations have canvassed wards throughout the city, speaking with voters about Issue 27. Our own King PTA and community members canvassed sections of Ward 1. APS volunteers, about 32, helped walk and talk Ward 2. We even had the principal of North High School out. Freedom Block has been canvassing Wards 3, 4, and 5 and expected to hit 45,000 homes over the next couple of weeks. Community volunteers for Issue 27 and supporters have been walking and talking Ward 8. And last but not least, the LeBron James Family Foundation mobilized 30 volunteers to connect with all of their I Promise School families throughout the city. So during these last two weeks before November 5th, we'll end our campaign with digital ads popping up when folks access websites, apps and social media platforms to generate maximum visibility and support for the levy across the city. Social media posting continues. You can find us at APS Levy Info on Instagram and Citizen Committee Akron Public Schools on Facebook. I cannot help but feel encouraged that we are doing everything that we can do to ensure that Issue 27 passes. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next, we have Linda Hamobian.
Good evening. I tell you, now I realize why I stayed so long on the school board. It is just wonderful to be here. It's so positive. So I am here as your Akron City Councilwoman at Large, President of Black Elected Officials, representing 27 elected officials throughout Summit County. I'm also here as a previous school board member who served 16 years. And I tell you, this is just so wonderful to be back, to hear all these positive things happening. I am here to endorse your levy. We have done it already as a group of black elected officials, but I wanted to come in to personally endorse the levy because I recognize how important this is. It is extremely important. But not only that, I want to congratulate you. 12 years of not passing or asking the citizens to, to pass a levy, that's unheard of. I mean, we were doing it when I was on the school board probably every four or five years or so. I think you see that Children's Services Board is on the ballot and they go around every four years and they have a renewal. But I'm just here to tell you that the work you're doing is so critically important and we are so happy to endorse the levy and do all we can. I want you to know I voted on October 9th. So you have, I know, two votes. My husband voted on the 8th and I voted on the 9th. So you have at least two votes, but I know you have more than that. And all of you, I've seen, you know, certainly Representative Sykes on the, out there. I've seen Carla and her group out there. So I know you have a lot of cheerleaders. And I just want to talk about the fact that, you know, with all the unfunded mandates that you get from the state and the federal government, you know, to not have a levy on the ballot. you know, to not have a levy on the ballot for 12 years is just unheard of. And I want people to recognize, it's extremely good management, and you're doing the best you can with what you have. But we know that if this levy fails, you'll be back, because it impacts Black, Brown children more than others, and all of the children in the district. But those kids are extremely in need, and we know that. So I want to make sure that we recognize that it is critically important that we pass this levy, and that your needs are just as great as other social service organizations, because you provide the whole gamut, education, social services, you name it, for all of our children. So thank you very much for the work you're doing. And I might just come back just to feel good, because this was a very feel-good meeting. So thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. NJ Akbar.
Excuse me. May I? I forgot to recognize and recognize my dear friend Reverend Harrison. And congratulations on your appointment. I'm sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone. It is indeed very good to be back here. I've served with many of you. And so I know what it means when Linda says that it's just a good feeling. I get that feeling too. Before I get started, I want to say, I'm here as a private citizen, but also, more importantly, as the Executive Director of the Black Elected Officials. As Linda mentioned, it's set 27 Black elected officials in the county. Some of them are sitting around this table today. And we have some in the room that I want to make sure that we introduce. Obviously, our President, Linda F.R. Imobian. But we also have State Senator Vernon Sykes, who is here, who is our treasurer. Sorry, pointing the wrong way. And then our President Emeritus, served as President for 10 years of Black Elected Officials. Veronica Sims, State Representative, is here as well. So I wanted to make sure that I introduced them. I serve as the administrative, secretarial, arm for the body. And we're excited to welcome Reverend Harrison to our group to make us 28 members. So congratulations, Reverend Harrison. I'm here to also say that I support and endorse the levy Issue 27. It is critically important for our community. As we think about what type of Akron we want, we have to think about a better school system. They're inexplicably linked. And supporting this levy means that we're supporting students and supporting what happens beyond the classroom. North specifically has the most diverse student population and the most, it's growing, school in our district. And they speak multiple languages. Failing to pass the levy means that there might be support that needs to be cut directly to the classroom, which of course, the board hasn't made that decision. But it's impossible to talk about not having a levy that doesn't affect the direct classroom services. So I want our public to know how critically important it is to support the levy. Specifically, our district gives free meals to all students, no matter what background they come from. That's one of the things that this district does that other districts do not do. It will preserve great critical programs, like the arts and sports programs, which you know are extracurricular and are added values, value-added to our student experience, but also it costs on the budget. And the last thing I want to say is, if we fail to pass this levy, not only will Black and disadvantaged citizens be the most harmed, but it's not just about education. It's literally about changing the material conditions and life outcomes of those that are coming behind us. So thank you very much. And I implore you to vote yes on Issue 27.
Thank you. Next, we have Betta de Blasio.
Good evening. Good evening, fellow board members. All the way up. Okay, cool. Thank you, thank you. I'm a little taller than I usually am with heels on, so. So good evening, fellow community members, school board administration, teachers, parents. My name is Betta de Blasio. I am a substitute educator at APS, as well as a policy fellow at the Freedom Block. I'm here today to address an issue that affects not only the safety of our students, but also the trust that exists between our children and our schools and the systems in place to protect them. We at the Freedom Block share a common goal. So we all share a common goal, the well-being and success of our students. Schools are meant to be safe environments where young people can learn, grow, and thrive. However, the presence of police officers in our schools and their use of force on students has raised serious concerns within our community. I'm here to advocate for the policies that prioritize police-free learning, environments, de-escalation, accountability, and above all, the safety and dignity of every student. Over the years, we've seen increase in the use of police officers, often referred as School Resource Officers, or SROs, in educational settings all around. While their intended purpose is to protect students, there have been numerous instances, both locally and nationally, where the presence of the police has escalated minor disciplinary issues into traumatic events for the children involved. While some may argue that police presence is necessary to maintain safety, we must ask ourselves, safety for whom? The presence of armed officers in schools can create an environment of fear, particularly for Black students and other marginalized groups. Many studies suggest that a school can be safer when students feel seen, heard, and supported by their teachers, counselors, and peers, not surveilled or policed. That is why I stand for those who are going to advocate for police-free schools, places where safety is achieved through community building, conflict resolution, and investment in mental health and social services, rather than through the threat of force. By reallocating resources from law enforcement to supportive restorative practices, we can create a truly safe environment that encourages learning and growth and equity for all students. In conclusion, I urge the board and city officials and community members to listen to the community and place the well-being of our students above all else by creating a healthy and safe learning environment that is free from all forms of violence. We must ensure the dignity and rights and future outcomes for all students. We must create an environment that students feel safe and supported instead of criminalized. Thank you for your attention to this matter. And please be sure to vote yes on Issue 27. Thank you.
Next, we will have Angela Dinkins.
Good evening. Superintendent Robinson, Board President Autry, board members, and all others assembled. I'm Angela Dinkins, Vice President and Program Chairman of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Theta Theta Omega Chapter, and a proud APS kindergarten teacher. On behalf of Gwendolyn L. Curtley, Great Lakes Regional Director, we're pleased to be here tonight. Founded in 1908 at Howard University, Alpha Kappa Alpha is the oldest Greek letter organization for African-American women, with over 360,000 members in 12 countries, including the United States, Canada, and South Africa. Our International President, Danette Anthony Reed, leads our mission. Recently, on October 12th, over 450 members of the Northern Ohio-Western Pennsylvania Cluster met at the University of Akron, where we focused on the business of Alpha Kappa Alpha. And also, we came to make an impact on Akron community. We donated over 900 books and 8,000 hygiene products to support APS scholars and Access Incorporated. We hope to inspire Akron students to enjoy reading and support our young ladies through the Period Project. On behalf of Gwendolyn L. Curtley, Great Lakes Regional Director, Stacy Smith, Northern Ohio-Western Pennsylvania Cluster Coordinator, and Dr. Leah Shaw, Theta Theta Omega Chapter President, we would like to donate books and hygiene products to the following schools. East CLC, Books and Hygiene Products; Higher CLC, Books and Hygiene Products; Finley CLC, Books; Sam Salin CLC, Books; Case CLC, Books; and Barber CLC, Books. Tonight, we brought a small portion of what will be going to Barber CLC. And I thank you for this time to address you and to bring this donation to the Akron Public School. Thank you. We have books in here. But for each school, we are making delivery. And our last delivery will be tomorrow. It was just so many to bring, but we brought a portion with us tonight.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks again to all of those who addressed us this evening. Next on the agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry, to Vice President Jackson, Today, a release was sent to our families and to our community. And I want to just kind of recap the letter that was sent to our faculty, to our staff, and to our families. I'm writing to inform you about a serious incident that occurred at Firestone CLC on October 16th, 2024, involving an Akron Police Department School Resource Officer, which we do refer to those as SROs, and a student during the morning routine metal detectors procedure. A second Akron Department Officer was present, also became involved. There was an interaction between a student and the SRO, which ultimately resulted in the officer using, officers using force against a student. The incident was witnessed by students and staff. I reviewed footage of the incident. And based on my review, I made an executive decision to request that the SROs be removed from the school and requested per our SRO contract with the city. A meeting with city officials to make the removal permanent. On October 17th, 2024, APS officials, including Board President Autry and I, met with the Akron Police Chief Harding and city officials to review the incident and express our concerns. I also spoke directly with Mayor Malik after, about this matter. I want to ensure that the district took immediate action following this incident. Emergency medical services provided a medical evaluation for the student involved. APS requested for the immediate removal of the School Resource Officer. And we will also be doing the same thing for the additional officer as well. End this incident and that they not return to our school district. APS leadership immediately contacted the Akron Police Department and the City of Akron's leadership to inform them of the incident. Counselors and victim assistants were deployed to Firestone CLC to offer support to the students and staff who witnessed the incident, and Firestone families and staff were notified on the day of the incident. I want to be clear about our position. While we deeply value the protection our law enforcement officers provide to the district and the important work that they do in building positive relationships and trust between our scholars and law enforcement through the SRO program, there must be accountability when incidents like this occur between an SRO and a student. The safety and well-being of our scholars and staff remains my highest priority. We will continue to ensure supports, resources, are available across our district for any scholar who needs assistance processing this incident. Thank you for your understanding as we work to ensure the safety and security of our school community. Sincerely, Dr. Michael Robinson, Superintendent of Schools, Akron Public Schools. Regretfully, I have to inform that two of our scholars last week, we lost one of our preschoolers at Kraus CLC, who passed away Tuesday, October 15th. And another scholar, a kindergartner at Barber CLC, passed away on Wednesday, October 16th. Please keep them in thought and prayer. Thank you again to Firestone Theater Association for donating another $5,000 to the Firestone CLC Theater. I went to judge, helped to judge, the Safety Kids 2024 poster contest, sponsored by Summit County Prosecutor Elliott Kokovich, his office. Truthfully, when we looked at the projects that were there, I didn't ever, I never looked at the back of them, but we did, ended up selecting, our table, that is, a scholar from Akron Public Schools as the number-one scholar. And had a little fun with the police that were there. It was really a very nice event. Attended NIFSTEM High School 9th Grade Commitment Ceremony, which was absolutely fabulous. Had the opportunity this Saturday to attend the Freedom Block meeting. Learned a lot about, a lot more about our community and some of the positive things that are happening across our district, our system, rather. The State of the System address will be Wednesday, October 30th, at Garfield CLC at 6:30 in the afternoon. The doors will open at 6:00. You can certainly RSVP through the link. And it should be on the website, but we'll make sure that if it's not there, that it is there. But we've been promoting and sending it out. The next cornerstone meetings will be occurring in November. And I think that those, the cornerstones are on the screen. Cornerstone 2, Wednesday, November 20th, at 4:00 and at 5:00 p.m. Cornerstone 1, Culture of Safety and Belonging. And Cornerstone 4, Family Partners and Community Engagement, on Tuesday, November 19th, at 3:30 and again at 5:00. And then Cornerstone 3, Operational Excellence, on Thursday, November 21st, at 5:00 p.m. And also, November 22nd, at 3:30 p.m. And now for our Be Kind 3:30. During this year's Father Day Walk, which is absolutely fabulous across the district, students were invited to walk to school with their fathers or father figures. However, for some students whose father couldn't attend, we were fortunate to have student athletes from Garfield step in, providing a source of companionship and encouragement. These young men, selected by Coach Boyd and Garfield Campus Principal Catherine Rodocker, visited with the VORIS students, offering kindness and connection in a way that truly embodied the spirit of Be Kind 3:30. It was much more than just a walk. These football players sat with the students, much like big brothers, making sure no one felt left out on this special morning. The student athletes showed tremendous leadership and heart. The student athletes showed tremendous leadership and heart, making this day that both the elementary and high school students will remember. These moments of connection not only highlight the kindness we value, but also reinforce the idea that our students are role models who make a difference. I'm proud of the way they carried out the Be Kind 330 mission for supporting their younger peers and making them feel seen and valued. Thank you to the football team, Coach Boyd, Principal Rodocker, and Douglas Academy Coach Kandif, or Kandif, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing it, and all who made this moment possible. It's efforts like these that make Akron Public Schools a truly special place for our students and for our families. I'd also like to just note that one of our greatest supporters here in the district on a lot of the things that we do, Mr. Kent Boyd had a fire this past week at his house. And so if you see him, know him, please reach out to him. Certainly, and, and he was at the meeting on Saturday doing just what he does all the time, which I thought was very noble in, in the midst of all of his situation. So, thank you so much. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Are there any questions on the superintendent's report? Member Hall.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Robinson, I appreciate you stating that there's resources for our children regarding the Firestone incident. But I'm wondering if we can be proactive and not wait for students to come with an issue? If we can maybe talk about it in classrooms or have some type of pep assembly to put it out there, this happened, let's, you know, if there's any questions. But, you know, when we tell kids to just come, if they have a problem, some kids aren't going to do it, it's just going to harbor. So, just different proactive ideas.
The principal, to my knowledge, had, they, that same day, they had some things going on there to kind of help kids with coping through this. But I will certainly pass that on to, because this is something that I think that we need to probably be discussing in a more deeper way in all of our schools, to be very honest with you. But certainly, I will pass that information on to her. But I knew, I do know that on that day, that there was some things that they were doing that same day, and we dispatched people there, so.
Any other questions? Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The people that we dispatched there, who are those people? Who do we dispatch?
From internal.
They're like trauma-informed people?
Yeah.
That there's crisis, a crisis team? Okay, thank you. I want to be clear on that. Also, I want-
That's led by Dr. Merkel. And I can't remember, but, yes, and I know Dr. Merkel very well, but he is the one that leads that, so that was dispatched that same day.
Okay, excellent. Because I think that's good for the community to know as well.
Sorry. And today, Mrs. Outley, she was also meeting and doing some things with the staff today.
Okay. Also, another thing, when we talk about community relationships and partnerships, I know the ADM Board has, and I know this may have been before you, when we're talking about the different signage and the things that we can have out in schools, but I know they have some great resources. And when I went to their event about a year or two ago, I had spoke with a young lady whose name, it misses me now, but they were talking about opportunities to like partner with the school, exactly, Member Hall, what you were saying, of just anonymous calls where they can see counseling, phone calls, they have the suicide, the crisis line and things like that. It's so many things that our community offered that is free for our, to our community and our students, that those resources being just laid out and available. I know it's some rules, because I remember asking about this before, but if that stuff can be available, that helps to the anonymous, like, hey, this is where my mind is at with this. And it's just great work happening, so maybe that someone at the ADM Board can, some links can be made with that, just for resources and, you know, cards and pamphlets that maybe can be shared.
I will get with Dr. Merkel. This was before my time in terms of what children, yeah. But I'll, I'll reach out to her.
Thank you. Reverend Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Robinson, is it, have we communicated the expectations throughout the district? Has something been done to ensure that we're communicating the expectations of de-escalation, the expectations of our SROs in the schools, through other schools?
So, we are having an additional meeting, which is, just happens to be a part of the contract, but we are going to be having an additional meeting with the city to further discuss some things around that. And from there, we are going to be also meeting with principals to share with them around things that should be done, should, maybe not should be done, things that they can do to help with some of these situations within their schools. So, we do plan to address that at the next principals' meeting.
Member Sykes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I think that this is a great time, a teachable moment for us. It's an opportunity for us to take a look at our policies and procedures and to determine what we're doing, how we're doing it, if we need to update what's happening. Even though I have not seen the tape, the film, I would suspect that we had staff there. And I think it's important to take a look at what was happening, what the staff was doing, or what not, what the staff was not doing, and what our policy says that our staff should be doing. Also, I want to just note that, you know, these things are happening within the community, even though we tend to want to feel sometimes like we are an island within ourselves, but this is happening within our community. And while we have no control over the Akron Police Department, we do have control over what's happening within our community, to make our children feel that we see them, we hear them, we care about them, and that we support them in what's happening. And, you know, I want to extend my sincere, my sincere apologies to all of the students that, at the Firestone CLC that had to see this, that had to hear about this, and in particular, the student and the family that was involved in this particular incident. And I hope that we will work to do everything that we can help that particular family and that particular student. I mean, I'm looking at charges that the student has been charged with, and I'm wondering, how can our student be charged with trespassing at his school? You know, so I, I want us to look at these types of things, but more importantly, what it is that we can do within our system to make sure that this doesn't happen again, whatever happened. And as I said, I have not seen the tape yet. I'm not looking forward to seeing the tape, because when I see the tape, you know, I want to think about it as it relates to my child and what I would expect and want for my child, because I will see this young person as my child also. And so I'm concerned that we find ourselves with this type of an issue. I appreciate the way that your staff handled it. I appreciate the way that our president has dealt with this, but also know that this is a public situation, and I want us to make sure that we are constantly reporting to the community what we are doing about these types of issues. And I think that the committee is a great place to have these issues come before us, to look at it, to review it, and to see, because things are constantly changing for all of us, to see what we can do to make this better. So, I, I, I'm just, I'm just so sorry that we have to find ourselves in this situation, but I know if we work together, that we can make this better. Thank you.
Yes, I did. I did have an opportunity to speak with the mom today, and we had a great conversation. One of the things that she wanted to just make sure that we were taking care of, but I assured her we are, and we will, from this, to your point, there will be continuous learning, even where the situations where there, cases where there isn't a problem, but we want to make sure that everybody is ready in the event that anything happens at any point in time, even whether our students are in school or out of school, that they would just know how to handle certain issues that will keep them safe in school as well as out of school. And I'm also going to be communicating with the student himself.
Thank you. Any other questions? Vice President Jackson?
I see we have on the agenda today a training to deal with various crisis management, set a training for 10 people to become trainers, then to train others dealing with certain matters. And I just wonder, because I know when we had an incident some months ago about the young man in Goodyear Heights, we talked about how can we inform our students of how to react and respond in different situations? You know, you say prevention is better than the cure, and I'm just, I know we're talking about the training for the adults, but also training for the youth, bringing in resources or, and again, these may be community resources that are available. I know that the Freedom Block does a lot of work around things like that, really leveraging our community relationships with our children, with people who are familiar with the children in these buildings, as far as not, one, not only their rights. I was thinking about this the other day when I was out voting, because I had, I'm an APS graduate too, I had Mr. Finley, I remember Goodyear Middle School civics. I'm like, do they even teach civics anymore? I remember he gave me a little small constitution, and I thought I was the real deal with that constitution. I wanted somebody as a sixth grader to try me, because I knew my First Amendment rights, right? And I stood on that. I could say what I want and say, you know, 12, I remember, I was 12. And that sparked something in me because of his, Joe Finley was his name, and because he was passionate about it, and he gave us resources. I remember, I was 12 years old, and I still remember that, right, about my duty, my rights as a citizen, and, you know, also how to interact and interface. So, I just say that gun, when I, we talked about gun safety and whether it's plague, really giving students these real-world resources so that they know how to respond in whatever situation, so one, you live to see another day, you have a real fight, and just how to navigate these systems to really equip our children with that is something else. I just want to put that on the floor for like considerations, because it may be organizations that can come alongside us with all of this.
Thank you. Member Alexander?
Just a comment on what was just said. Hopefully, in that training, there will be something where the trainers will understand how to train individuals and have a piece with training the students during this time. That training will be training probably our staff, but maybe they could be training our students, like you said, how can they respond? How can they address situations? How can they avoid situations and so forth? So, that might be an idea too, to look at this training and let it be for them as well. Thank you.
Slash.
Good evening, board members. I'm looking at Dr. Robinson, but yes, to your, that is the item that Student and Family Services has on the agenda. So, yes, that training is to add to our arsenal of trainers, if you will, so that we can train the entire district, so we're training people to be trainers. But you raise a great point, and I take that to heart about thinking through how we also include our students into that, that thinking and being able to recognize, because we don't always know how we, our own selves, can be a precipitating factor by either our tone, our language, our body language, that can kind of add to a situation as opposed to de-escalating. So, we're very excited about that, to be able to train the entire district for, again, how to use our words and our body language to de-escalate. Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions for our superintendent? Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to our treasurer's report. Dr. Thompson.
I would be, well, let me first say thank you for the opportunity to present, Ms. Autry, Ms. Jackson, rest of the board, and Superintendent Robinson. But I, as we talk about finances, one of, I think all of us think quickly to the levy. And I, I think I would be remiss not to say thank you to Dr. Chapman and Mrs. Sykes, because they have done yeoman's work on leading this levy effort, and you can tell the passion when Dr. Chapman was up here, and that's exciting. And, you know, when we started this process, it, you know, most of the things I heard were not positive, and that's begun, that's seemingly turning, and it's turning because of the efforts of the committee and the work that they're doing. And you'll see how important that is to us as we look at our, at our finances. So, what we're looking at is the September monthly report, and the board had requested that I try to change the format a bit and make this more digestible for all concerned. So, that is the effort here. So, we're going to look at what matters most, and that is the finances as they relate to our five-year forecast that was done in May 2024. So, that's what it's comparing to. So, we're taking, albeit a short, a short snippet of information in terms of actuals being August and September and October, but also it is what's going to feed our five-year forecast, which is on the agenda tomorrow. And you'll see that you have a PowerPoint that kind of leads or gives you the information beforehand, so you can digest it. And the goal tomorrow is to ensure that the board members have a voice in how we frame this five-year forecast and how we move forward, and that you understand the process of what goes into a five-year forecast, and I think that'll help people better understand it. So, tonight, we're just going to look at current finances compared to the May 24 forecast, and this is comparing trends in expenditures and revenue from July to September 2024 to May 24 forecast. And then we're going to look at the variances, and we're going to talk about what has caused some of our variances. So, total revenues is a good story. So, right now, we are at, we are projecting that we will be, now, remember, every number that you see is a number above and beyond what was forecasted, whether that's positive or negative. So, we are, we have, we believe that we'll hit almost $4 million in additional revenue. I'm cautiously optimistic that that will be slightly higher, because in our forecast, we were appropriating for declining student enrollment, but we didn't see declining student enrollment for the first time in quite a while. We actually saw increased student enrollment, and you know that our school foundation dollars are based on student enrollment. So, we may see a higher number than that, but we haven't seen those numbers come in until we do the October student count. The downside is our expenditures are trending $23 million higher than anticipated. Again, that's above and beyond what was forecasted. We knew we would be in deficit spending, and we'll talk about what are some of the factors that are pressing our expenditures. So, if nothing changed, this would be the estimate that we would see as the impact on our five-year forecast in terms of cash reserves. We knew we're in deficit spending, that's not new. It's just, it's accelerated, and there are some reasons for it. So, let's take a look at revenues, and as you can see, real estate taxes, restricted state aid, unrestricted state aid, that's that $3.9 million number. Where did that money come from? Well, real estate taxes came in higher than anticipated by about $2.1 million. We received more dollars from restricted state aid than we forecasted by 1.3 million. And our unrestricted state aid came in at about, just a little over a million, almost 1.1 million more than we anticipated or more than we forecasted in May of '24. There was a couple that were a little bit lower, our unrestricted federal aid was $622,000 below estimate, and all other categories were at $29,000 or $30,000 less than we anticipated. So, you can see, that's pretty well spaced out. The biggest chunk of our additional revenue is coming from real estate taxes. On the flip side, you can see here, the employee benefits and salary, it's about 30%. Purchased services and all other expenses, and we'll get into what constitutes all other expenses. expenses. So I'll start with all employee and benefits and salaries increased by 7.4, almost 7.5 million, and these variances are due to staffing, increased costs in healthcare expenditures and requirements to meet the needs of an increase in student population, which should also translate into more dollars. And substitute staffing costs for all categories is extremely high and rising. So last year, we spent over $21 million on subs alone. So substitute costs are a factor in our financial situation. Purchased services, it's $2.6 million over what we anticipated, and it's because of some factors that are very, very difficult to control. Instructional services due to us paying for Edmentum, which is a software program, and for APS online, because we're feeling what many school districts are encountering right now, which you've heard called the Esser Cliff. Things, a lot of things were paid for with that $150 million of Esser dollars, and those dollars are gone, and things are returning to the general fund. So that's a piece of it. Secondly, repair and maintenance services, the needs for repairs of our CLCs is increasing, and we have already a fairly large deferred maintenance list. And what happens all too often as school districts tighten their budgets, this is an area they tighten in, skip repairs, and they, they just continue to accumulate and accumulate and accumulate. And we, we think of all of our buildings as new, but we're going back to 2007 when this process started. So, you know, that doesn't seem to me like that was that long ago, but do the math. You know, these, these buildings are, some of our buildings are pressing 20 years now. Textbooks, we've talked about it before, 5.1 million, almost $5.2 million variance for the science and health adoption being paid in fiscal year '25 that we thought or forecasted in May would come out of the '24 May forecast. And additionally, there's a $1.5 million estimate for fine arts adoption in fiscal year '25 that was not included in the May forecast. General supplies are over at $1.4 million. It's due to basically two factors. Classroom supply funds, support the state-required highly qualified instructional materials fiscal year '25 were not included in the May forecast because it came in late. That is another example of an unfunded state mandate that doesn't send money with those. That is a requirement. Computer supply funds increased due to a purchase of Chromebooks in fiscal year '25 that were not included in the May forecast. The Chromebooks were originally planned to be purchased with Title I dollars. That's why it wasn't in the five-year forecast. However, the Title I funds were used for other expenditures, and as a result, it came from the general fund. All other expense categories, this encompasses exactly what it sounds like. It's a whole litany of, of things that, like insurance, buses, the list just goes on and on and on of other expenditures, and that's $13 million, and this is our largest area of a variance over, over what we estimated. Again, that purchased services, which is part of that, that $2.6 million, those three factors up there apply. And then additionally, we had $901,000, almost a million dollars due in expenses coming back to the general fund from Esser that weren't included in the May forecast, and also building construction funds of $900,000 higher in retrofitting Robinson CLC to a STEM High School weren't included in the May five-year forecast. I think it's important to note on number five, had we not retrofitted and moved to Robinson CLC, you would see a much larger number up there because of the repairs and cost to stay where we were. So even though it costs money, ended up costing a little bit more money than we thought. In fact, probably one of those catches, which was a foundational problem in the library area, finding it and repairing it probably actually saved us a lot of money in the long run. In the short run, it's money out of our pocket. But again, that's an investment that brings dividends back to the district, but nonetheless, it impacts as a variance. So the bottom line is our cash balance, our reserves is at about $19 million as compared to our five-year forecast. It's a large number, there's no question. We're working on that as we speak. It gives you insight into a five-year forecast, but we, we'll talk more tomorrow about some of the things that we're going to try to do to mitigate it. So some of the factors I think is important to remember, and I am so glad that our city councilwoman spoke about levy cycles in 12 years. And although it is wonderful that the district stretched this thing for 12 years, it's kind of paying the piper now, and we probably should have been on the ballot much sooner from a fiscal perspective. The Esser Cliff, which I've already mentioned, falling, replacing those dollars that were, you know, we started programs with Esser money because we thought they would be impactful. So it's very difficult to take away programs that are directly impacting student achievement, and we're starting to see increased student achievement in our district. You don't want to take it away. So if you don't take it away, it's got to come out of general fund. Unfunded state and federal mandates keep hitting us. That's not new. You've all heard that, but they continue to come and at a record pace recently. Increase in student population, that's good. That's good. It's going to net us more dollars. It speaks well of our district, but initially, it caused us to have to hire more staff than we thought we needed. So some of the reductions that you, that we baked into the May five-year forecast, which is part of this large variance, we weren't able to hold those because there were needs that we could not have anticipated. Significant increase in voucher expenditures. This is just the tip of the iceberg, folks, not trying to be a naysayer, but I'm very concerned about where this is going. The real purpose of this and where it could land public schools all over the state of Ohio. And again, we mentioned before, our increase in district substitute costs. I would like to reduce that. In our conversation today, actually, Dr. Robinson had a really good idea. I'm not going to share that right now, but I thought it was a great idea to, that might incentivize and keep people at work. So we know, we know people's work is hard. It's hard, it's hard work. It's grinding, hard work sometimes. It's rewarding, but it's, but it's difficult sometimes, but we still need to be responsible employees and make sure when we can, when we're not ill, that we come to work. So a proposed timeline and sort of a plan to share, I'd like to share. So at tonight's meeting, you're being asked to approve the September monthly financial report, the full reports included. We have a finance committee meeting tomorrow, so that's so exciting that I get to be here two nights in a row, talk about finances. Can't think of any place I'd rather be. And this is the intro to the five-year forecast process. I really want you to bring your questions. I don't, if you think it's silly question, or you should know this, and you don't want to be, just email it to me, and I'll answer it. But I really want you to get your questions out so that you have the best understanding you can possibly have when we come out of this, because as Ms. Jackson had stated, knowledge is power. Understanding allows you to explain to citizens, why are we in this position? Then on the fourth, which is our first meeting in November, regularly scheduled board meeting, you're going to receive two five-year forecasts. One five-year forecast will be, of course, the next day is our, is our levy, is voted up or down. So you'll receive a presentation about a five-year forecast with a levy pass, passing, and with a levy failure. At our 11:19 finance committee meeting, we'll review the five-year forecast, whatever it is, and we'll begin discussions on two topics that I would like to focus on. And it depends on how our levy goes. If our levy is, passes or fails, a financial stability plan, because just passing the levy, folks, is not enough. It's not enough. If we just pass a levy and sit on our heels, we'll be in trouble way faster than we want to be. So we're going to have to make some decisions, albeit not nearly as difficult as a failure, but nonetheless, some, still have to make some tough choices. Dr. Robinson's been saying that, reminding of us of that, I think since he got here. Our recovery plan would be a failed levy, and those are, yeah, you're talking a much larger number. Then at our 11:25 meeting, the five-year forecast final will be presented and on the agenda for approval. That's required statutorily that we pass that in November. A levy fails, again, we just talked about it, but one thing I want you to start thinking about, if in fact, we need to think about it, but it's better to be prepared than unprepared, to have a discussion about a resolution of need, which is the first resolution that has to be passed in order to be on the ballot. So we have to move quickly if we're going to go back on the ballot in the spring. So that's a part, that's, that's key to make sure we, we're prepared to make that decision, and then talk about the elements of a, of a financial recovery plan, not crafted yet, but the elements of it. Levy passes, first of all, I'm going to do backflips across this room. I'll be so excited, if I do backflips, you'll be calling the emergency squad, so that won't happen. I'll jump, how about that, just a little bit? We consider the elements of a financial stability plan. What does that look like? We have a, this is still tentative at this point, so we're not sure if we're going to meet here or not, but if we do meet here, meet on the 16th, we'll present either one of those plans and then bring it to the board in January for approval, because if these plans, depending on the depth of reductions that would need to transpire, we need to get this out to our employees, get this out to our community, so that we can begin to plan and others can begin to plan. So that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions I could answer?
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Other questions?
Before, yeah, before the board asks questions, I want to make sure that, reiterating a point that Dr. Thompson brought forward, this levy is going to pass. I'm going to speak it into existence that it's going to pass, because it has to. But be assured that four years from now, eight years from now, 12 years from now, we will have to be on the ballot to not even catch up, but just be able to hang in the We went 12 years, and we basically lost for sure one opportunity, possibly two opportunities, almost three. This, this would be the third opportunity. So I just want to make sure that you, you understand that as soon as this levy passes, we are back on the ballot in four years. There's just absolutely no getting around that. We have been very prudent around our spending. This is, this really, what you can be assured of is that there has not been any type of issue around spending funds, mismanagement of funds, any of that. This is just what happens when the, it's like putting a pot on the stove, and you forget that it's on the stove, and the water is boiling, and the pot is now starting to burn, because there's no water left in the pot, and that's where we are right now. So I want to make sure that we, and when you look at the variance, as we met today, there are things that we, we may have to delay, that we wanted to get done, but we may have to delay those items, and then we can come back and revisit them in the spring and determine if it's a yea or nay. But it's things like that, that we can look at in terms of bringing our variance down. So I just want to make sure that I shared that information before any questions were asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Other questions? Reverend Harrison?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Thompson, I, I just want to be sure, and I want to refer to the finance committee chair. So some of these numbers are alarming. Now, during the finance committee, that is a public meeting, and that is televised.
It is.
And the public can join as far as their questioning, if they can get an explanation of where the money is going.
Absolutely.
So it, it comes to asking for people to trust us, and it comes to transparency, it comes down to, if the numbers are alarming, then we are an open information source. If the committee meetings are online, are televised, so we can make sure that we're being transparent in our spending when unfortunate incidents or occurrences happen. I, I do think that $910,000 to retrofit a elementary school to a high school is a great investment, because we gained another high school, not just any high school, but a STEM high school. But I just want us to be sure, as we're talking about money, that we let the public know that they have access to the information and that they have access to asking us questions so that we are fiscally responsible to the stakeholders.
Agreed. Agreed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Thompson, in the event that the levy does not pass, what happens with North High School and the students at North High School?
That's a great question, and it's an economic question as well. We're talking about a facility that I think all would agree has passed its day. We have a pressing roof issue, for example. So you look at that variance, and you look at those dollars. $5 million is to put a roof or pig on lipstick on a pig, but that we would have to do if this levy fails, for example. As a financial guy, that just makes me cringe to think that we're going to invest $5 million into a building that needs torn down. But we also can't let the ceilings fall in on kids, and we have nowhere to put these kids. North High School is now one of our largest schools. It's growing in population. They need a new building. I've even heard, I've even been asked questions like, well, why don't you just close it and send them to other places? Mathematically, could we do that? Sure. Mathematically, you could do that. But do you know what you do to your operational costs when you do that? Not to mention, most importantly, the impact on student learning. When you take 43 languages and you spread them out, and then you have to hire more tutors, more interpreters, busing costs, all of these things, and more interpreters, busing costs, all of these things, and that's what is making that community so vibrant, is all of our immigrants coming together, developing the North End. I would hate to lose the momentum that we have going at North High School. Those kids deserve a new building as much as anyone.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up. So Dr. Robinson and Dr. Thompson, so are we stating that if the levy does not pass, that North High School, the students at North High School will have to be dispersed to other schools for the safety of our children?
So that's a question that we would have to, I mean, a response, I should say, that we would definitely have to massage, because what you're doing is you're going to transform the landscape of this entire district. If we move those kids and disperse them across this district, and our, some of our other high schools are not as large, but they're not that far off either. So right now, which is a good problem to have, and I don't consider it a problem, I think it's a good challenge that we have, but even in the bookto cluster, even though the enrollment is lower, they're, they're growing in population of a very diverse school. And if that continues, because it's grown this year alone and even from last year, if that continues, you're going to see a different, a different bookto within the next year or two. But that's a question that, an answer that we would have to really massage around what that's going to look like, because I do not want to invest and waste $5 million in a building. You can change, you can fix the roof, but there are so many interior things that have to be done to that building, that just putting a new roof on it is not going to fix the problem. It will cost several more millions of dollars over years to do that. So that is a question that we would definitely need to sit down and respond, that we definitely need to sit down and massage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, treasure, for this presentation. I know I was one of the board members that really wanted to see a presentation. Before I was a board member, I never expected to make decisions about things like $23 million, and that's just our variance. And so this has been really helpful for me, and I know also our community members who are making tough financial decisions themselves when they are deciding about our levy at home. They are paying attention to this also. I was at some ward meetings recently, and a community member asked a question, and before I could even say anything, another community member stood up and explained House Bill 920. So people are watching, people care. I look forward to tomorrow's meeting and learning more, and I know our community members are also watching this and appreciating our transparency and our information. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll also make this a last point to something that Dr. Thompson mentioned in this presentation. Over several years, we have kicked the can on a few things down the road, and we're now where the can has nowhere to go. Cans on building repairs, we have CLCs that are now reaching the peak of the 20th year mark, where we're going to have to look at roofs, all of these types of things. So it's vehicles, we have not purchased them in terms of vehicles for people to actually do work within the district that require that work. So just want, and then you have unfunded mandates, which is, we're excited about having the growth with special ed and having the growth around ESOL, but it is also requiring additional funding. And you don't get a whole lot of money for ESOL. You get money for special ed, and even that's not enough for what we have and what we have to deal with. So we have some good problems. I think that this is a great opportunity for us to really start to look at some things from a different lens and a different, from a different perspective that's going to help us be able to move forward. It is, it's an exciting time, but we do have higher insurance costs that, you know, and we do have cases where we're, where we're having to deal with some of our employees that have medical issues that we have to, we have to pay for. So, you know, there are other things that go into this, but I just want to make sure that as we're looking at this, that we're looking at it from a holistic perspective. This just didn't happen this year or last year. It's been ongoing over several years. And we're now, like I said, at the point where the pot is on the stove and there's no more water in it, and it's burning.
So we'll let our secretary sit down before we entertain a motion. And so now we will entertain a motion to approve the September 2024 financial report.
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion further? Seeing none, roll call, please. Ms. Autry. Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Reverend Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next is the President's Report, and I just actually wanted to share and bring to everyone's attention about the upcoming State of the Schools address on Wednesday, October 30. This will be the first time that this is being offered in the evening and available to our community. All the years that I've ever been in attendance, it's always in the middle of the day, and I'm looking around the room like, where are the actual families who attend our schools? And so I'm excited about that. And so I just want to encourage everybody to take advantage, to come out that evening to Garfield, our newest CLC, and come, you know, get even more detailed information on the amazing things that we're doing, and I'm sure, you know, the reality as well. So I just wanted to share that. And I wish I would have actually shared during my community reflections, but I just wanted to mention the passing of Mr. Larry Weigle. And Mr. Larry Weigle was a very instrumental principal in my life. I know he was a bookto graduate, he was a bookto principal, I know he was at North for quite some time. He's even called me over the years since I've been on this board, just to give me encouragement. He was an amazing educator and principal, and I just wanted to extend condolences to his family. And so that'll conclude my President's Report. Next, we will move on to committee reports. We have legal contracts and board policy. Member Molnar.
Thank you, Madam President. Our next legal policy committee meeting is next Monday, October 28. The agenda has been posted. However, I do want to remind everyone and echo Member Sykes's comments earlier today about our new business section that is available in every legal policy committee meeting. And so if administration wants to bring to this meeting or other meetings to review any of the policies and allow us to use an opportunity to make meaningful change from the incident that has happened recently, anything that needs to happen in the legal policy committee contracts or policies or handbooks, the new business section is available. So I wanted to give that as a reminder. But for tonight, as far as tonight is concerned, we do have a third and final read on Policy 8660, incidental transportation by private vehicle. It's for non-routine transportation, like field trips. And so with that, usually now we make a motion for that third and final read.
So is there a motion to accept Policy 8660, incidental transportation of students by private vehicle? It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second? Seconded by Reverend Harrison. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson. I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask about insurance.
What was your question?
Someone can answer when they're transporting them to like field trips or the zoo. When I'm hearing, when I'm looking through this, I was trying to gain clarity on private transportation. I remember, I don't remember how many meetings ago, but I think we were talking about parents transporting their kids, and I remember Hall had even mentioned, so if I'm taking my own daughter. So, it was you. You just don't remember. About transporting kids to different things, like even as a parent, if your child, the liability of it, basically, is what I'm getting to. So the private transportation, is there a rider, is there a different type of insurance that would need to be had before that happens? And if anybody can gain, give me some insight on that.
So in the policy, if a parent is going to be giving transportation, then the insurance on, it says, "The district will maintain on file the amount of liability insurance on the vehicle and the name of the insurance company." So the parent of the participating student will be given, upon request, name of the driver, owner of the vehicle, and description of the vehicle. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that's what I read, but no.
Okay.
I'll talk, I can talk about that, because I can make a copy of an insurance card, my vehicle and all that. And some insurance companies, if you're serving as a transport agent, if something happens, will not cover that. So I just wondered, the level of fidelity that's happening, depending on how many parents transporting kids, the rates, like how early in advance that they, those are like the little gray areas that I was just curious about, which we can, and so I just wanted to posit that at this time, because those are the little loopholes in some cases. Because now you're serving as a transport and your insurance carrier can say, if you're sharing as a vehicle or transportation, that's a different type of rider that you need versus, I'm just taking my kid, if I'm taking my kid, Summer's daughter, your son, your son, you know. Like some parents will do that. I just know that, because I have parents try to do at the school. Oh, she can ride with me, and the parents say, oh, they can ride, but we just don't allow that. So that's why, just for y'all, for the consideration of, I know this is the third.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
Quick question. This is just for, I'm sorry, recognized.
You've been recognized.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam President. So this is just for school events, this transportation, correct? Okay.
Mr. Alexander.
Does this include them taking the kids to and from school? Are we talking about to and from, or just to events?
Yeah.
Just to events.
School-sponsored trip.
Got it, got it. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Reverend Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next is finance and capital management, and as we heard, they're meeting tomorrow. And Mrs. Sykes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we're meeting tomorrow at 4:30 here in this room, and as Member Harrison said, you know, the public is invited to come, and we hope that you will participate, or if you're not able to be here physically, that you will be able to tune in and watch it. I do want to thank Dr. Thompson for this report. This is the beginning of the type of thing that we have been asking for, and I think that it really is, it really is great to get this type of information, and that tomorrow we'll be going through, as a new chair, and we have a new vice chair, we'll be going through some reorganization, and what we plan on seeing and how we hope that we can mold this Finance Committee in that it is responsive and that it is effective and that we're doing and presenting the information in such a way that the public would like to see it. Starting with, I really would like to see us having a meeting of the committee before we have a meeting of the total board, so that, so that the committee is able to talk about what happened in the committee and to report out in that way. So, but I know most of this is already set, so I'm not going to, we're not going to change anything, but going forward, we want to, a little bit at a time, change it in such a way. And I will say that one of the areas that we definitely want to talk about are vouchers. And as you said, and what vouchers have done and mean to this committee, and I'll give the board just one real quick update, you know, that we are now a part of the committee, that are part of the lawsuit against the state of Ohio, and that lawsuit was scheduled to start in November. The judge has pushed that back because she needed more time to look at all the different filings and the different information that have come in for her to rule on, but the committee feels that's a good thing, that because our attorneys will want to look at those items and to look at, be sure that we are on top of all of the different issues that's been filed before the judge. So she has changed the date to sometime in 2025, which seemed a long way away, but we know that it's not, because it's just a couple of months. So we want to talk a bit more about that. And so the community can understand the kind of money that's coming out of our district that we would normally have, and that would maybe help prevent us from having to ask for a particular millage higher than, maybe we would have to still go out, but we would have to ask for a lower millage. But because of vouchers and money that's going out of our community, then we find ourselves asking for even higher millage than we normally would have to. So those are the kinds of discussions that we want to get to and talk about in the Finance Committee, and so that is tomorrow at 4:30 in this room, and everyone is invited to come. Fun times.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Any questions? Thank you. Next, we have instructional policy and student achievement. Vice President Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Instructional policy met on Monday, October 14. It was a wonderful meeting. Dr. Wan was president, she presented, and I cannot remember the young lady who was with her. Dr. Kaver was here as well. Say it, please.
Kathryn Dingar.
Thank you. Ms. Dingar was with her, and I thought it was a really great meeting. One of the things that I liked that was highlighted was that they write grants to help fund a lot of the work that's necessary for them to do, because as the superintendent alluded to, there is not enough money for the OELA, the Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment is what the acronym is for. And so with the things that they're trying to do. But we're excited, because even for the target goal of the state, we superseded that by over 14%. And so they're doing great work, the things that they're putting in place, the multiple mailings, the interpreters for the parents, to kind of meet the parents where they are. Some of the issues that they do find, however, is, I think, I remember Hall asked about, you know, just not having enough tutors to speak and to interpret for students, and understanding that when they come here, it is, when Dr. Wan opened up the meeting and she was speaking in Vietnamese, and she just wanted us to imagine being in a situation where you enter in a classroom fresh and they're speaking a language and you have no idea what they're talking about, right? And so it helps you to have a sense of empathy and a greater understanding of the needs that we need for our learners, but I really like the fact that they're doing the work, that they're getting gritty, trying to find resources, community partnerships, grants, and whatever they can do to try to fill gaps and prepare things for these families. One of the things also that they talked about was the fact that often with these meetings and services that they try to provide for their families, a lot of the families aren't able to connect. We talked about like homework and assisting in that way, because they have to work, and they're working multiple jobs, because when they come here, they have to pay that airfare for that entire family that came. And so these are things that were considerations and that they talked about. Another thing that I thought was great that they highlighted is that 1,700 learners have exited our English as a Second Language Program, meaning that they exit at a certain level of proficiency that's required. And so I think that speaks to the great work that they're doing, and yet there's still much work that has to be done, especially given that the population has grown significantly over the last five years, as we all know, and that it continues to grow. And one of the things that I posited in the meeting, and I think this is a great group to delve into that, because we talked about the disconnect, the academic disconnect that... to delve into that, because we talked about the disconnect, the academic disconnect that happens. And even with all these trainings, because they still have to take these standardized tests. And if they don't, and the standardized test has to be given in English, because it's looking at English proficiency, and depending on what part they transfer here. And I said, it's even a disconnect of dialect of African, Black and Brown children. If certain, contextually, if I don't understand certain language, it's a, it's a disconnect for me too academically, because assumptions are being made that I understand. And I said, so you can have American citizens that's sitting in classrooms, is being assessed on tests, and it's still an academic disconnect. So, when we talk about closing gaps, how can we really, with fidelity, close these gaps to help these learners? And I just think more needs to be done when we're examining standardized testing and how those are disseminated, how they're implemented, and really, is it the best for the overall child to gain growth and knowledge? Because they're coming, these kids can be brilliant, a genius, and they're getting on the, they're getting special education. It's, they're getting labeled as a disability room. Really, it's an interpretation thing, not that they, not a comprehension thing, right? And so, I was just glad to hear about that, that they're doing the work. And so, they really discussed the resources that they're providing, how it's still unfunded state mandates, which hence the grant writing that they do. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Member Hall?
Sorry, I guess my voice is too loud, I didn't even tell me my mic was off. But when she opened up in Vietnamese and she was looking at us, and we were looking like, "What?" I felt like the children that are coming here, that are speaking to us, and we expect them to learn English, we're looking at them like, "What?" So, with that being said, we also, we talked about identifying parents that speak English and also speak the language. I know it was our last board meeting, we talked about, we voted on substitutes, not having to have degrees. But if we could come up with some type of program to help our parents become these translators that we lack in the schools, to help these students learn English or just articulate their language to English, I think that would be a great impact to help out our ESL teachers. Also, Mrs. Nguyen, when she also started off, she said, "Students should be architects of their future." And I was like, "Wow, that really makes sense." But we here at Akron Public Schools have to give that foundation to all of our students to become architects of their own future. So, I just kind of wanted to piggyback off that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee? Yes, Vice President Jackson?
Yes, and to Member Hall's point, we talked about from the lens of a peer professional, because we know that the states have certain mandates for instructors, but those parents, community members that speak the language can come in the role of a peer professional. And when we're just highlighting this, and we talk about all this equity and through the lens of equity, it's the same thing when we talk about people in our schools that can connect with the children from the communities that attend the schools, right? That can meet those needs, that can speak the language of the people, you know. Yeah, so, just looking at it from the whole big picture of how this impacts everyone, we do have an immigrant population that come in that's here, but we also have Americans, born American citizens here that's having that same disconnect as they sit in a classroom for unidentified special needs, or just because I'm talking to you and I'm using words like pontificate and iposit, or, and if I don't understand that or if I'm not reading that level, this is like you're speaking Chinese to me. And so, that same glazed overlook, our students have too. So, it's really identifying that and rethinking the systems of education, which is, you know, some legislative stuff. But I thought it was a wonder, one of the best committee meetings that I've been at since I've been on this board, as far as the work they're doing, how they're examining the work, how they're meeting the needs, because I can see how it's applicable throughout the district. So, thanks, thank you again, Member Hall, for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for that. And I was also at that meeting, that presentation was interesting, in the different language. And then it was really nice to see it unfold as she added different interventions, because we were sitting there glazed over. And then once she gave us materials and pictures, and then, then we understood. She was like, "Good, you just read Vietnamese," but we didn't realize it. So, this is a testament to her instructional strength, so thank you for that. Next, we have Equity Committee. Mr. Alexander?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We met on October 15th, and we were, had very good, robust discussions on a number of things, but we were crunched for time due to us having to interview for potential candidate, excuse me, on the board. And so, we started with Mr. Vasilati, Athletic Director, and he started out talking about this referee program that we have. We have kids who are getting certified to be referees, so they can participate and actually work as officials in games and so forth. He said they were about, they started out with 12 students, they, right, now they have seven. He said they, they were, most of them were from North High School, because that's where they were piloting the program. It costs for each seat for these kids to participate, $45. They want this program to eventually go throughout all of the schools in Akron Public Schools, so that all the kids have the opportunity for that. And that is considered part of that equity piece that we, we want. He said, "This is the first that we have in Ohio, that Ohio has, where kids are going through this, this type of programming." And it was brought up by Ms. Jackson about the masonry program at Bookton and maybe doing something like this there, so those kids can possibly do some of those things as well. He also said that they will be able to start very soon, and they'll be dealing with basketball and football and soccer, I believe it was. So, they'll be able to get a chance to start working on those. He also talked about the expenses of our athletic costs for these events and so forth. And he said 60% to 70% of our funds are spent on the workers for the events, the officials, and the maintenance of the facilities, such as having football, baseball fields that may need maintenance and taken care of before the game, football fields that need to be maintenance and taken care of for football events as well. He also went and, we had a discussion, which was very robust as well, talking about equity and talking about when you have a home team who may be at another school's field, and they're the home team, and the concessions. That was very robust, because it was, at some places, there are items that they can only use at the school. There are other things, items that they can not use at the school, because they don't want them. We were talking about, how can we make it equitable for those schools who may not, and how can we make it accessible for them there? We also went on to talk with Mr. Keenan. He had a short presentation, he didn't get a chance to give us much, because it was so short. But he was talking about the construction management risk program and how that is going and where they're starting at. And so, we, we didn't give it much time, because we were really crunched again for that time, so we didn't have much time. So, we do want him to come back to give us that, because it was just a small piece, and we really didn't get much out of it. So, we need him to come back and be able to give us a full report on that. So, basically, that's what we discussed in Equity Committee. Ms. Hall, did we miss, did we miss anything?
No, I don't think you missed anything. Mr. Vasilati did take information back and said he will come back to us regarding the fields and how to make it equitable for schools that do not have fields and how their teams can make money. And I just want to say, Dr. Robinson, thank you for this, because having your staff put these together, because I know I asked for it at one of the last board meetings before we had our, our Instructional Equity Meeting. And I had asked for an update regarding the referees and an update regarding the field. So, thank you for following through with that.
Yes, and I also want to thank Dr. Chapman, because she's been pushing and getting all this information to us, making sure that they get the information to us beforehand, so we can look at it and so it can be discussed in the meeting. And so, I want to thank her as well, she, she's done a good job on that. So, thank you, Dr. Chapman.
Thank you. Any questions for Equity Committee? Also, just want to express my appreciation that we're having more and more of these conversations out loud here. I know also, Mr. Keenan was going to give us a presentation around some of our upcoming facilities plans that we didn't get to, so I'm looking forward to hearing that as well in the future. So, thank you for all the information. The next item on our agenda is approval of the previous meeting minutes. And so, we do have three different meeting minutes to approve. First, I'll call for any additions or corrections to item 9.1, meeting minutes from our board retreat. If there are no additions or corrections, we'll entertain a motion to accept those as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Member Hall. Is there any discussion on this one? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson. I'm sorry. Is there a question?
Not a question, but if I could have my name corrected in the minutes. Harris Sun. Sun, yeah.
What am I saying?
Oh, it's misspelled in the minutes?
Yes.
All misspelled.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Start over. Reverend Harrison, abstain.
Abstain.
Ms. Jackson?
Your mic on.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh with one abstention.
Thank you. And next are the regular meeting minutes from our Monday, October 7th, 2024 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If there are none, we will entertain a motion to accept these as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Abstain.
Motion carries six oh with one abstention.
Thank you. And finally, we have item 9.3, meeting minutes from our special board meeting on Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Molinar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Abstain.
Reverend Harrison?
Abstain.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with two abstentions.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. And next, we will have our Personnel Recommendations. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend approval of the Personnel Recommendations presented in categories 10 through 20, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Personnel Recommendations? It's been moved by Member Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Jackson. Is there any discussion around Personnel Recommendations? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you. And next, we will have approval of our resolutions and motions in the consent agenda. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 25. They are in proper format, and I move for their approval, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Molinar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next is our Business Affairs Recommendations. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Autry. I would like to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category 27, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve our Business Affairs Recommendations?
So moved.
It's been moved by Vice President Jackson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexander. Is there any discussion around our Business Affairs? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you. And there is no unfinished business under new business, item 30.1. We do have a item to approve our 2024 graduates.
Madam President, we need a question here before we start there.
Yes.
My apologies, I was writing and everything just went so fast. But I need to abstain from 25.1. So, I voted yes, but I need to abstain from, I vote yes on everything except for 25.1.
Under the approval of Business Affairs?
I think it was Consent Agenda.
25.1 Consent Agenda?
Yes.
Do we need to retake? Can we retake the roll? Prefer to do that. So, we'll retake the roll. Mr. Alexander, this is 26.1, approval of the Consent Agenda.
25.1.
Well, the Consent Agenda is 25, 26.1.
It's 26, includes the entire Consent Agenda.
Yeah, so it's in there, yours is in there. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes, to everything, abstain from 25.1.
Got it. Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh, with the exception of 25.1, which is six oh with one abstention.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. And so, back to item 30.1, certification of the 2024 high school graduates. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Molinar. Is there any discussion? I'd just like to say, this is one of the things that is just wonderful that we should be celebrating, that we graduated 1,256 students this past academic year. And so, best of luck and wishes to all of those people. And thank you to all the teachers and staff who helped prepare them. And that being said, is there any other discussion? Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Just as far as the certifications, are we looking into the cosmetology program a little bit more in depth? Because some of the kids are graduating high school and still have to incur the cost of about 5,000 plus to finish getting their accreditations to become beauticians and, you know, whatever that is. I know there's some other schools, such as like Talmage and other schools within our area, that those kids are graduating with their certification. And upon graduation, they can go and work in salons and do nails or do hair. So, I think we're missing the beat on that a little bit, because we're making kids spend an additional cost when we have the program in our schools.
Yes, so that matter has been addressed and corrected. But the issue was when COVID hit, that those two years of students, those classes of students, were not able to get the hours. So they graduated with hair design, which is under cosmetology, and then they can go back and get those opportunities. And we did provide opportunities for them to come, if they were willing to come, to make up the hours. But now, we're back on track with them graduating in cosmetology, and we're actually, right now, working on a partnership to do something around cosmetology because some of our young men really just want to be a barber, which is a part of that program. So we are looking at something right now to address that, that hopefully we will be able to pull off before the end of December.
So just clarity. Thank you for that, Dr. Robinson. So are we stating that maybe what are sophomores now that are in the cosmetology program, they'll be the ones graduating with their full cosmetology license?
They... Yes, these... Those students that are now sophomores, yes, they should be graduating with the cosmetology, actual certification and ready to go when they leave.
Wonderful. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion around our certification of our 2024 high school graduates? Seeing none, roll call, please. Dr. Thompson?
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. There is a need to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G3 for the purpose of conferencing with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Molinar. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Dr. Thompson?
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We stand in recess at 7:36.
Thank you. We are back in session at 9:49 PM. There is an additional item that requires our action. Item 32.1, which is a resolution number 24-151 to approve settlement agreement, release and waiver. Is there a motion?
So...
Second.
It's been moved by Reverend Harrison, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please. Dr. Thompson.
You're moving faster than I can write. Okay.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you very much. Our next board meeting will be Monday, November the 4th at 5:30 PM. We look forward to seeing you then. We will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please. Dr. Thompson?
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. We stand adjourned at 9:51 PM. Thank you.